All right, we'd like to pick a call for meeting to order. Everyone who's there can say the first.
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madeline, that's your pleasure with the... Oh, I think you should approve the consent agenda.
And I'm going to second that because...
I'm going to abstain since I'm not in the meeting.
Um, the next upcoming select board meeting is Thursday, January 20th here at 5:30 at the Fire Hall. Madeline and Suzanne, any comments or announcements from either of you? I have no comment. I have no announcement.
Um, I... No, actually, I have a question. What happened to our shed at the town hall?
Um, Steve removed it because it was falling apart.
I did shed?
Pardon me?
I have a shed.
It's good that you moved it now.
Yeah.
Because then we don't have to pay the extra demolition cost. Right. We do have a drainage problem in the back parking lot that I would like to think about fixing at some point. So it's just as well that the shed isn't in that location anymore.
Would it make sense to offer that to other town people?
That's your call?
Offer what?
The shed. The dilapidated shed.
The dilapidated shed makes no sense at all to me. If it's too dilapidated for us, we could be too dilapidated for anybody else?
Can't even hear them.
I'm sorry?
My ears didn't hold. I can't even hear them.
The shed that was down to the town hall has been destroyed because of dilapidation. Question was, should it have been offered to somebody else in town?
If it's been destroyed, why was it...
It was offered to other people in town. The chief was going to take it, but he decided he didn't want it here because he really didn't have the land to put it on. Had the net and all the walls.
Just curious.
Is that something that we want to talk about as an item on the agenda?
Just anything that we have of value should be offered.
So why don't we put that on for the next?
We can do that?
Agenda, next. Okay, thank you. This is item number one, road committee discussion. The members of the newly appointed road committee and the road commissioner were invited to attend this meeting. They were provided with the road committee... road committee charge adopted by the select board on December 9th. Do you want to take the lead or do you want...
Um, I don't need to take the lead. I think it just makes sense for the board to talk about expectations and have a discussion about roles and responsibilities moving forward so that everybody knows how this is.
I think we should start perhaps with having them all introduce themselves. I'm not sure they all know each other.
Did everybody get a copy of the West Bathros Committee?
Anybody who wants a copy of the charge, I have copies here.
I did one of them.
Do you want a copy?
Why don't you have some extra?
It was the one that was emailed to you.
It is?
Yeah.
Do you want a copy? So Steve, why don't you start by introducing yourself and then have each person on the road committee introduce themselves.
But you can.
My name is Steve Reno. I'm a former road commissioner with them.
Jeremy?
Jeremy Ward.
Mike Hennessy.
Joe Arena.
Scotty and Grayson.
Harry, that's the road.
So I think it's really ridiculous to sit here and read what's on here word by word in the front table of reading. So we want to have an open discussion about what's on here. Is there questions? Is there thoughts, ideas?
Where do the proposals originate from? You or Steve or...
Steve is still the hub of this... He's still the road commissioner, so he's still the hub and everything would be going through Steve and the committee before it's been in town. I want to be town manager and I know it. Sorry. And this one role would be the final decision maker. One of the things that's happened as the position of road commissioner changed from an elected to an appointed committee, there were some changes that weren't articulated well enough about roles, et cetera, et cetera. And back when we rolled out our first public contract, the sand contract, after the contract was awarded, there were a lot of questions from people who know roads, et cetera, who came afterwards and asked questions about the contract. And I didn't think that that was the most helpful way to ask the questions. So part of the idea when I just kind of boarded out one day, gee, maybe we should have a road committee, was the idea that some of those discussions should happen pre-contract. So the idea was that people who know something about roads in town could have some input before contracts were developed and as they were being developed and as... and served and the committee served as kind of not a boss to the road commissioner, but a sounding board, et cetera. So that when the proposals came to the board to select them, there would at least have been some discussion by people who actually know how to put a road together before we got it. And speaking for myself, I read a book once about how the roads were built, but I'm by no means a professional road person. I'm just opinionated. So that's one of the founding reasons why I blurted that out five or six years ago, so that we could avoid having questions asked after a contract had already been put out, after an RFP had been done. So...
Well, do you have more questions within the community other than just the four boards I presented if you're trying to alleviate questions?
Well, no, not to alleviate questions because people are always going to ask questions. But we'd have a better idea what questions might come up because they already... many of them already would have come.
I think also part of... one of the things we're hoping to achieve with this as we brought it forward was to set a road improvement schedule so we know every eight years or so, here's the road we're going to pay, here's the so prepare. So we can kind of feel that we have a better control on upcoming immersion repairs and having the committee go out and help evaluate where the roads are and repair need, what culverts perhaps need to be addressed, certain elements that perhaps we don't see on a regular basis. And that's in hopes of having the committee provide some additional input on the status of our roads.
So we're supposed to give our recommendations to the select board and then the select board collaborates with Steve? Or are we supposed to collectively collaborate with the road commissioner? I mean, I guess I'm a little confused. I feel like there's a disconnect between the two.
The committee would work with the road commissioner and then the road commissioner with us as the board select. And of course, as anybody is allowed to come to a board meeting.
Yeah. So our job is to give Steve our recommendation on what we see that may need improvements and then he will collaborate with us.
Well, I think in an ideal world, if you're going to send him this even writing, that you would copy the board in on it so we all see them at the same time.
Okay.
And just being aware of what's being discussed.
Okay.
I think that would be a good solution. Part of what the committee brings to the table, you'll have a chair and a vice chair. So maybe you would have whoever that chair happens to be as the focal point in a collaboration with the committee and then certainly connecting with Steve and the select board.
Okay. So is there a... do all of our roads have an evaluation put down on them? And if they do, how is that evaluation determined?
So I know we have a software program, part of DOT, that we have a license for. I know that one of the things we talked about was bringing that and starting to use it. We're not currently using that and that's something that we can, as we input the information into that platform, it will let us know, essentially track all the roads in performance and hopefully provide some of those metrics. Right now, we don't have that information. We're not utilizing the platform right now.
Is the information generated by complaints or suggestions or how is the information generated? I'll leave it up.
There's certain roads that I don't travel that I wouldn't know and there's roads that you probably don't travel. So hopefully the collective approach is to get an idea of where everything stands. If you see that there's a culvert that's clogged or overflowing during a storm, that will help, you know, address it, you know, as people see it or if somebody in the community sees that, you know, we welcome their input if no one else has seen it.
Is that information written down and kept at the town hall?
That's what we wanted to go forward and that's what we want to use that software for. I mean, I know it's been a lot of work down the line of these roads, but we couldn't tell you the last time the culvert on Rich Point was cleaned out. We should have a yearly scheduled maintenance on some of this stuff.
Ideally, we'd like to use that software and get every culvert that's in the town, driveway and stuff that the town is responsible and stuff, all put right in there and that. I can include you in it.
That's kind of my question. You've got it in your head. Does anybody else? As far as how many culverts there are?
I don't have it all in my head. I'm sure that Jeremy knows as many as I do. I at least could find out somebody who was on the town halls and there's a problem with the culvert, who would have assessed the situation.
While you're in your pickup truck, so you have a great time to put it in the records, right?
Right.
It sounds like a couple of years back, the town did do a list of all the culverts had looked at, like 10 years ago now, some of it was a list of all the culverts in town and what ones we did back then.
That's why that software is what we saw before. I mean, we all have bits and pieces, but nobody has it all. You can go to one database and get the info.
It was probably 10 years ago, but there was a complete list of all the culverts and ones that were missed and added to another one.
But whose responsibility is it to have that recorded off?
Essentially the town administrator. I mean, she's got the software, so it's going to roll up to the compilation of the data brought to us and then shared and put it in the software platform.
So it won't be data that I come up with. It will be data that I receive from the road commissioner and road committee. And then I would be responsible for putting it into the computer program.
Gotcha. So Steve is going to be responsible for documenting every single culvert in town West Bath?
Well, through the assistance of you though. Yes. In theory, you'll... I definitely you each, let's say we have 25 miles, I think 27 or 29 something miles. You each take six mile road, drive around in your grid, say, oh, culvert at this address looks okay or maybe needs some repair. I mean, that's really, we're trying to get the first cursory look at the status and then figure out the plan after that. We don't, I mean, we don't know the full status of, you know, what roads need what.
Okay. So that's ultimately the priority at this point is the culverts, it sounds like?
I think that's why you work with the road commission to determine this. We're not... My thought is, we're not here to tell you what to do or how to do it or what the priorities are. You as the committee are going to tell us what the priorities are because you know, that's what we're asking for. You know all that better than the three of us sitting up here.
Okay.
I think it should be important to let the committee know that what was likely to discuss with the road commissioner a few weeks ago, possibly looking at some kind of employee of the town to have some equipment to do some of these smaller repairs.
Yeah. Wouldn't it...
Full-time employee?
It's all time, a part-time. It's just maybe looked at and I was discussing whether you buy him a one-time truck and a few tools and a trailer, whatever, you know.
Okay.
To address a plum cow, a tree that fell down, you know, things of that nature. That's what the town is looking at.
Isn't that... Would it be cheaper just to pay the extra money just to have like a local contractor? I care if those are carrying weapons gone and sharing.
You're right, Jeremy.
Don't know yet. It's been a long...
I mean, they would be doing more than that if you want, the law, you know, maybe I was all the school, sending the school.
Okay.
We'd have to make it where the town is.
Financially.
The biggest reason...
Any rules with the takeoffs on that?
So we had to...
These are all ideas and all of part of what we want.
Yeah.
Your input for the idea, what would be best. Nothing here has been decided.
Sure.
That's why you guys are...
I thought you guys should know what we're talking about.
Okay. And so I guess what I'm asking is that has anybody set that particular role? I mean, who's actually looking for that particular information so we could collectively make?
I think we had talked... part of that discussion has kind of bubbled around, but we talked, had some serious conversation about it at the last comprehensive plan committee because of the number of little tiny, tiny jobs that just sort of never get done, that just need to be done, like a pothole somewhere. And with the difficulty that people have in maintaining regular employees and keeping schedules, especially in the season like we've had where people are doing a lot of stuff everywhere. So the idea of having a municipal employee was kind of floated as a way to handle that. And a lot of...
So you'll still need somebody to manage this particular issue?
Right.
That would be the road commissioner.
The road commissioner would manage the day-to-day things on roads, not the...
Well, the road commissioner is...
Gentlemen, I can't hear.
Well, if the road commissioner is ultimately overseeing this individual, he's going to end up being a full-time individual as well because there's no way he's going to be able to manage his business that he has now and oversee.
It would just be managing the things that needed to be done. Ultimately, what we talked about was maybe this is someone who currently, what I'm thinking about is maybe clouds the town office, maybe, you know, a combination of things. So ultimately, Steve would be the one listing the priorities, but he wouldn't be able to see in the day-to-day.
And we're not specifically there yet. We need to look at, there's a lot that goes into that on the evaluation of cost analysis.
What we're running across right now, the people are looking more out of the town to get things done when they call. Okay? Right now, they'll call and they expect it down, they think we're a municipal. We have a municipal now. And if you don't give it out right then, they call five, they have 15 more guys, then they start bad off here, but it doesn't need time. If you had a guy on hand, on duty for the rest 20 hours a week, send him on these little projects, they call it and take part to talk.
This was not brought up to them. They saw this tonight. This is just what I'm hearing, nobody. It's very preliminary. It may not fly, but it's being discussed itself.
Right. Okay.
And I mean, ultimately, you guys will help decide, perhaps that's even, you know, you may go out there and be able to determine a status on our roads and get it... you know, if we can get a schedule established on, you know, scheduled hot top, scheduled ditching, scheduled, just that we can get an idea, it helps to coordinate the schedule of repairs and expenses.
So when will the first meeting be and what information could be given to us so we can start this process? Because we're going to need your thoughts on it also, where you'd like to see us go. We need information from the town of, you know, I mean, we're going to find out if that's where the worst roads are, people are going to complain about it. I would think that would be something that needs to be addressed in this meeting. You know, what avenue to pursue to achieve all of this.
Right. So Steve, do you want to send a meeting? Do you want to...
Do I? I don't see any need for me to even be a part of this. This is something you guys wanted to put on. I don't... They come up with suggestions, I'm willing to listen to them, try to get them done for them. I'm not going to sit here and meet these guys, you know, and do my regular job to figure this out. And that wasn't the part of this whole deal.
No.
I did not sign up to be on this committee.
Correct. What... It makes sense. If we called, if we as a select board call the meeting and talk with you all about what you are seeing at this point, about what you have as your own observations as people who drive the roads every day and you know what you're seeing instead of, I drive the roads and I don't really know what I'm looking at. But Steve also has also some plans that are not in the computer yet, so we can get those from him, what he's looking at for priorities as he's looking at budgeting for this year so that we can get things started and then... You guys know how to talk, so you'll figure stuff out.
So would it be appropriate while you're all sitting here, we're looking to have a chair and a vice chair to define. You want to try and achieve that tonight and then you can establish your dialogue path forward?
Chair.
No, I think we need to schedule a meeting.
Yeah.
And then we can collectively come up with a discussion, see what everybody's role wants to be. Like tonight's a good introduction for everybody and we can figure out a date and time that we can meet collectively as a committee and we can determine who's the chair and the vice chair.
Prior to electing the chair, can I ask you to manage that first meeting?
Sure.
Perfect.
I'll manage the first one.
That's all I said. Prior to that, can you manage the first meeting?
Yeah.
I can do that. I'll just need everybody's email.
I can send it to you.
Okay.
Now, John, do you look at your email?
What?
Do you look at your email?
I'm lucky to look at the phone.
What?
I'm pure literate.
Oh, okay.
I didn't take this smartphone. I'm stupid.
Well, you're not stupid, but...
I know I'm stupid.
You did give us an email address, so that's the one that I used to notify.
You wanted one, I gave you one.
So I'm assuming we just call you when we need to schedule something?
There you go.
Okay. We can do that. But Jeremy, I will send you the other...
Okay.
Because I never got this.
Okay.
I'll show you my phone. It's in there somewhere.
There's, on the website now, there is a list of town roads. How... Because I've been interested obviously for a long time of what the legal road out in the town West Bath, which are both by ordinance and by actual weighing in one spot for 20 years, what this plan is. How much of a... how much exists on that basis?
I can answer that question because I looked it up. Because I had that question about the Hennessy Road, about the Austin Road.
So not where it's supposed to be.
I don't care where it is. The road is there and it's clouded down.
It's both.
But been there for 77 years and I don't know.
Yeah. But we don't have any idea of where it is.
I don't think that's ever been said. What it happened was is that, you know, they... it started out, let me finish. It started out like the Austin fact. These, they had the old gentleman used to have, like farmers, just take care of their own roads. Then everybody had to get assistance with the town to maintain that road because they worked on all roads. Eventually, it came, became a town road. So what it was, was a driveway that went into the house or went down to the, went into the Hennessy Road. That was established as the road. Now, I don't know if the, nothing was ever that I could find that it would say it was a two-rod road, one-rod road. The only road I know of in the town West Bath that is documented and everything is the Bull Rock Road. That's a four-rod road, the only four-rod road down because it used to be a state main road. All the rest of them, they just automatically got accepted by the town.
There are a few that are recorded. Hennessy Road is the E.R. Brown Road. It is, it is a rod, it is meets and bounds. The road's not actually where it is or the color fall, which is not surprising, but there are a few that are documented. There's more in Georgetown.
Careless about Georgetown.
Well, Georgetown is by the ordinance, the legal basis for roads in West Bath in many cases. My question was, and still is, how much of a database is there of that?
I'd be a good job to go with me. I went through town. How many of the towns in your port you go to? That give you the... Well, I'll talk to them. He isn't...
Well, you guys, I think we should move this discussion perhaps to your first meeting when you guys have a chance to talk about priorities. If that works for you guys.
Works fine. Right up my ass.
I move that we...
So just to get this moving and hold everybody accountable. Do you know when, Jeremy, you can do a panel in that meeting?
I think I need to send out an email to everybody and they can...
Get that too?
Yeah. We can figure out a time once I get that, I'll send it out and then we can get that organized for our first meeting, figure out JR, vice chair responsibilities.
Perfect.
I did notice here on this West Bath road committee charter, it has responsibility of the select board working cooperatively with the road commissioner and recommending a road maintenance repair and budget. Is that part of the committee's responsibility or is that solely for the select board?
We, the select board reviews the budget spends with the road committee, the road commissioner, but I'm certain that your input will help prioritize what you've seen out there.
Okay.
It's not necessarily something that's going to happen like next month as we begin this year's budget process.
Right. So it seems like we're, as a board, as a committee, we're going to relay information to you and you guys discuss correctly with Steve because Steve is going to be attending the committee meetings at this point.
Not until you guys got something together. I don't need to say out every bit for you guys. You guys have something much you want to discuss, I'll be going away and tell them what you have.
Okay.
And I'm not going to say myself every...
Sure.
This would be a conflict of interest, I think, with everyone.
Is there something that we, that you would be expecting from us at this point or is there something that's in the area?
Basically, towns want from the road, you know, different paths of the road that you think that we should, should be addressed.
Okay.
And certainly wants to be addressed.
Okay.
I don't want to be the only one calling the shots as in, okay, this path will be fixed and you guys also need to worry about this side. We can have a discussion over it and that's probably fixed.
Fair.
All will be...
Sounds reasonable. Yes.
Any other questions, thoughts? All right, let's move on to...
Thank you guys for helping us invent this. And I think it's going to be a very helpful addition to the way the town functions as we go.
Sure.
I do have one other thing to bring up, but this is done, is that I'm not sure what's going on. We've had two or three storms so far this year and we've bought in 90 tons of salt. And I was just wondering, who was given authority to be buying the salt and why is it being used so rapidly?
Well, in my experience, since I've been at the town office, Julie has always ordered salt. So when somebody goes to Julie and asks her for salt, she orders it. Jamie felt the need to order salt because other towns were having trouble receiving the salt. So he thought he would get ahead of the curve and make sure that there was plenty of salt. That's what I was told.
We agreed on giving him 30 to 60 tons a year.
We agreed on giving him 30 to 60 tons a year for a bonus extra to help out, not to supply and import salt to be used on the roads for hot roads. I mean, I saw pure salt on our roads today, this morning. I just didn't know if you guys changed your mind on how the salt was going or what's going on. But it's... We, uh, we paying him to do our roads with the sand that we supplied to him, not the bare salt. That was a problem issue. If we're going to do that, then we should have... If we're going to supply sand and salt, we need to supply the sand mixed with salt. And then if these guys want to use salt, then they buy, put it in their budget under further...
Yeah, we talked about that when we were coming up with the contract.
Right, because we... I mean, we can't monitor what's going on. I mean, right now, 90 tons of salt for a couple of these small storms. It's...
Isn't you the town's... You, you were over, I think?
I don't know. The town going 90 tons this year.
Have they paid or any...
Yes.
Are we over our quota or...
Well, normally, we're supposed to just put up 60 tons before...
Yeah, and that's not something that has ever been discussed. We've never talked about that. I think the simplest solution is for... I'll just let Julie know that if any requests for salt needs come from you. And I think that will take care of the problem.
Well, I just said, there's no way that I can monitor the way it is right now. I mean, if you guys want to monitor the salt or give an open checkup with it, whatever. But we got to figure out a solution for it.
So, one concern is we keep saying, "Go through the town administrator, through the road commissioner, go through this first..." Somehow, we're still getting around.
Yep.
Were we supposed to have the sand and salt mixed? We had some left over from last year. And was that supposed to be...
Well, yes, it's being mixed.
We put 500 yds mixed up in the building this year with salt that we had left over from last year. And now, we ended up putting another 90 tons of salt in that building. And I don't know where it's been going.
So, how much is left out of two storms?
I have no idea.
You were to estimate it.
I haven't gone out from... All I just looked at is to see how many loads that we've ordered and why we have 90 tons ordered this year so far when there's probably only been one snowstorm that we even needed the salt out of.
I believe we had a discussion probably two years ago. And it was decided that the getting salt ordered would go through the road commission, be okay by the road commissioner. That was a discussion the board had a couple of years ago.
Yeah, we just need to reinforce that.
Yep. Because that's... You can't argue that if there's no going on. No one tells them.
And while we're on the topic, are we going to open up, like, the first Saturday of the month that people can come get buckets?
That didn't work last year. What do you think? People are asking for sand.
I see them up there now. It was up there the other...
I said, "They got about 500 yds. If they want sand, they can take away at that. Maybe just keep poking hole open in it."
There ain't no solid. That's okay.
For what they want.
Right, it's for people who are going to do their sidewalks. You know, it's not... We, I think we, we've historically given it to the community.
Right, we just need to know what to tell people because people are calling.
Well, then, you better make arrangements with, I would say, I'd say, probably Jamie and see if he can take a bucket and put one bucket out every weekend outside so people can go get from that. And then after we get it, push it right back inside. If you guys want to open it one day.
The only trouble is with that, I found out, with giving town people, they want... I agree that they probably deserve it. But you get people and then come and then pick up. They've got a lot.
It's supposed to be two five-gallon buckets.
Well, that don't... That won't work if you're standing there.
It was just on the news the other night. Towns are all experiencing this problem. One or two people going in taking it.
Yeah, and nobody should be at our sand shed anyway.
But that's why you just open it up for like, three, four hours, Saturday morning. You want your sand salt, that's when you go get it. And then it gets pushed inside, and that's what's left.
But if you don't sit there and monitor it, they're going to take it.
So, why don't we coordinate that at the same time that West Bath has, um, access to...
Them?
Yep, and that way, it's, I'll say, visible by other townspeople so that if you see pickup trucks piling it in there while you're over at...
That's what I say, you're going to have to have it monitored.
But if we, but if we, we can go on Saturdays to the transfer station from eight to 10. We should do Saturdays from eight to 10 at the salt shed. And then you're not... You at least have other people watching in proximity.
Yeah, nobody is going to be...
I think the liability of having somebody over to our salt shed with heavy equipment is like just disaster.
Not heavy equipment, just open it up.
Just... Well, I haven't been stoned. People were, were, we have, we have first maintenance. I mean, that's just, I mean, you can't schedule that unfortunately. So, there, there should be a spot if the town wants to give the townspeople sand.
Well, maybe we have something to add to it. It used to be at the town hall.
I understand. Yes, and I believe it should be at the town hall. And we've had this discussion as well. Our insurance company does not want people at our salt shed. They don't want people on that property.
There should be.
Or Jamie.
So, how are we moving to the town hall? We don't have a shed there anymore.
We can get it in.
It was never in the shed.
We can get an open bin. We can get a locked bin.
You can do what you did before.
We can put it in the back parking lot. We can put it in the front parking lot. There are options.
You had it...
So, road committee, what are your thoughts on that?
Put it in the back parking lot.
In what type of device?
Eight or 10-yard canister that can be closed so it doesn't get watered out.
My idea would be a conic box. Put in a conic box.
Lock it up.
And lock it up. Or if the town chooses to, they can... The road commissioner or contractor can be paid to, to stock that for the townspeople if they want to.
Right, I think we need to offer sand to the town. We've been doing that, and I think it should be.
You'd have to buy that conic box because that salt field is going to ruin it.
You can't run them anymore.
No. But that is a good idea. I mean, it's got nice doors. You can shut it. You've got a drac in there. Put it in. And the biggest thing is, is it's going to be something you can lock up at night because people want to pull the pickup trucks. I mean, I, I want people to pick up when it was up to the town hall and fill back with the pickup trucks. And that's all we're going to load the sand and the whole guy that way.
So, do you know roughly, you, Jeremy, anybody, what that would cost?
They're five grand.
Four to five grand.
Yep.
So, are you...
And if you use it with salt and sand, it probably lasts about three years?
No. About five to 10 years.
I mean, just, you know, you'd have to, you'd have to spray it, maintain it, you know, insides.
I'd say it lasts for 10 years.
But, I mean, obviously, being at the town hall, these things are not very appealing, really. So, you know, we want to probably either paint it green or black or, or something just so it looks halfway decent in our parking lot, you know, so it doesn't look ugly. Um, but that's the, that, to me, it's a huge expense to provide sand for, for the townspeople. It, it really is to me.
Well, if this is something that can be... I just...
Definitely something to be discussed.
If we're talking about $5,000 expense, then, you know, we can't do that this year.
Yeah, then you got to...
Then, then Steve has to come over and, and take it from the salt shed and put it into the, into the bin.
And buying it and mixing up the salt and all that.
If you consider the amount that gets stolen, it probably is cheaper to buy five-gallon buckets, fill them up yourself, and have people check them out.
Yeah.
The problem is, is I, I went up there a couple Saturdays and opened up the shed and let people come in. Well, people walking in there, I always keep pulling this Saturday evening. With coming out of the...
Excuse me?
So, I've been grabbing their buckets, going over there and filling them and plugging them in. So, I didn't want to see them get out.
The sheriff's department has a program for the elderly where they can call and the sheriff's department will deliver it to the elderly.
Was that on our website?
Yeah, really.
It was at the beginning of the year. I can certainly repost it.
How did you stay up during the winter months? Like, we get a lot going on.
Does the town own any other land besides the town hall?
Here.
Here?
School.
And you don't want to put that school.
And put it right there?
There's, there's not enough parking here at the hall.
And I, I, I think putting down a town hall just makes us look at a isolate. You have people coming in and out of there and they make a mess. I mean, we had one down there with copper on it and we opened it up and they threw the trash in it.
Yeah. I think it would have to be down bottom and not a conflict we've always had, you know, put it down bottom.
It's still going to be very appealing because that thing's going to stop rusting. It's going to go...
Well, we need...
If you got something, it should be made out of cement.
So, short term, because by the time we were to pull that together, the weather's going to be over. Um, short term, can we provide every other Saturday at... I mean, how we move away?
Try to be there.
But if they open it for two... If we do it from Saturday from eight to 10, no, just open it. No one was there.
No, we can't leave people unsupervised at the salt shed. This company does not want that to happen. And I, the town administrator, don't want that to happen.
Risk management says no.
Yeah, that's a huge liability.
And Mike, Mike's observation about the number of stamps of sand over the years, whether it was at the salt shed more recently or at the town hall, as I recall, before it was moved to the salt shed, you'd, you'd have it filmed and then it would be gone like overnight because people would back it up. People backing up trucks. So, we moved to the salt shed hoping to avoid that and then run into a risk management issue. So, maybe, maybe the outcome is that we are not looking at a thousand-member community anymore. We're looking at 2,000 people and maybe we can't supply people with sand.
Okay, well, there's another suggestion. You know, like I said, if you had a high-town employee, you could put him up there for an hour and then he could be filling up five-gallon peels instead of people on their way.
I disagree, but this is not something that's going to happen this year.
Well, I understand that too. I've just put that on you for example.
So, we need to decide whether we have a solution or if we're just going to say we don't have salt available this year.
I would recommend that we don't offer sand this year.
And that we put, we put the word out and get the word out as well.
We're probably through the ice. Another week or so, we're through the ice season in our...
I, I would suggest we tell them it's not going to happen this year until we figure a long-term solution.
We don't have COVID.
Right, and, and because we can't afford to subsidize the businesses of people who are stealing our sand and salt.
Well, you're going to have somebody check you with, first of all, what town they're, what town they're from. Because they will come in from Fupa if they know they got free sand in it.
So, let's not do anything. Do we want to make a motion? Do we want to make a motion? And I move that reluctantly, we will not offer sand buckets to the public this year. I will second that, but we need to revisit this, yes, for the following year. So, if we can get that on somebody's radar.
It needs to be visited in the next couple of months.
Right, so, budget guns, you plan on buying a conic box or maybe a three-sided, you know, straight box and put a little V roof on it or something.
Remember the conversation in the next couple of months?
You know, we use the fire station may have here for the salt.
So, are you going to put a notice out online or something so people are aware?
Yeah, all, all in favor of not offering sand to... All right, we're going to really have to get...
Do you feel so in favor of that or... I did not.
Okay, all opposed?
Thank you.
Um, so, yeah, we'll have to really get to as the upcoming budget whether we're going to purchase... What did you call it? I'm sorry.
Planets.
Conic box? Or other...
Salt dispensary.
Some type of container.
Something. They probably have something on there.
And I think I enjoy this discussion and I think this is part, you know, even though you're the road committee, I think this is something that very much is part of figuring this all out.
Okay. We'll discuss it.
Thank you so much for your time and dedication, truthfully.
Now, we have, I have one other thing to bring up, you know. We go to these committees and we build a subdivision and we have to build these roads, the town specs and everything so that the town ever took it over, you know, they'd be up the specs. So, I've seen some of the roads the towns taken over through the town that were never brought up the specs. And now, we don't ever seem to have any discussion about taking over, offering the town to take over some of these subdivision roads that people...
Personally, I don't want to take over any of these roads.
Nobody does. I mean, what do you offer these people that spent all this money to get the subdivision put in?
By the people paying taxes that, that are going to want the same thing.
Right.
So, you can't, you can't say, "Well, you can have your road plowed, but you got to plow your own." I think it's, you get into a, a piece where you start offering to take the town over.
Well, that was the whole idea. That's why they're so strict on these subdivision roads and stuff so they built up the specs, so the town can take them over.
Well, we have our ordinances as well. You know, our ordinances to make sure that our, our roads in the town You know, our ordinances to make sure that our, our roads in the town are nice as we want.
Instead of also.
Not necessarily for the town to take them over, because all the community has.
Yeah, it's a process and make it a standard.
Is it also safety regulations?
Well, I'm just saying, we've got better subdivision roads, we have town roads out there right now.
Well, the sound looks really old.
But I think, I think it'd be hard pressed to tell someone who lives on a dirt road that they can never become a town road, but some of these newer subdivisions can that have been there.
And we'll task the road committee and the road commissioner with figuring out how we can get these roads up to higher standards for what we currently have. It doesn't make any sense to build roads for new housing that are not up to modern standards, even though our old houses are on roads that were not built to any standard except what the horse could make it through. But just because somebody buys a house in a new subdivision, they know when they buy it that it's not a town road. So that's their choice, it seems to me. We don't need to take on other people's, we don't need to take on any more roads, it's just.
No, I understand that. That's, that's one of my points. I mean, it's just that, you know, I know the standards for everything, but it always was presented based, you know, okay, no, just that case the town ever wants to take it over. So maybe, maybe we just have to take that to our side of it. We build them up to the standards period and then the town will take them over. I've been told that many times for the last 50 years.
So that we shouldn't be making false promises if at this point there's no will to take it over.
I don't think, it's not written in that, is it? Has the subdivision town?
I, I haven't seen it, but.
Are you just being told that the town will take it over? I don't know if that line was exactly in that, maybe.
No, it's not exactly said like that, but it's.
And part of the reason to build a road up too is that you've got to get an ambulance there or a fire truck in the spring when the roads are all nuts. You got to, you got to have a decent road if you want this $500,000, $500,000 road.
And, and I think that originated from state law, not town law. That was not town dictated. That's state.
It was a state rule, state's back.
It's not like someone in town decided to impose that.
Well, I guess, guess the bottom line of my question is, how did we end up with all these sand roads?
All these what? I didn't hear what he said.
All these junk roads. He said all these shit roads, is what he said.
Well, I mean, they were built.
I didn't hear what he said.
They were built 100 years ago with, with different spec material than we use today. So, I mean, obviously as things progress, you know, we get smarter and things change and evolve. And now, now it's our job to repair and break under sand.
Well, we're trying to. And then you go again, we have trouble, we afford the roads we have now, why won't they do?
Oh, I know, that's the problem. We wouldn't let the roads fall down again.
Right. By the time we get done fixing all the roads, we've used that all over again.
But that's the purpose of this.
That's the way it goes.
To schedule it, you want it as a cycle.
Yeah.
And truthfully, the purpose behind some of this is to set a schedule, we can plan a budget for that.
And I think that would be collectively a good job as the committee to put up five, 10, 15, maybe even a 20-year plan together for capital improvements. So Steve can make, you know, better decisions as, as he moves forward.
It helps as we spend the money.
Yeah, thank you. We need to move on. Thank you for your time. You know, we really appreciate it. We look to the committee. Anybody who serves on the committee, we much value, appreciate it. So we're going to say thank you because we know that, in some ways, you've just undertaken a thankless job. Because the roads are always going to be something that somebody complains about, but you guys.
There's only three things this town has put in money on, fire department, road, and school. Think about it.
Those are the most important things. Okay, business item number two. We need to Google on here.
Yes, you do.
Land use ordinance amendments. Darling, we'll attend the meeting to discuss pending amendments to the land use ordinance. This includes a request for a special town to amend the table of regulations, which defines principal uses in the urban development park.
No talking. I'm going to just turn outside for a minute.
I opened this up and when I got my packet and I was dismayed that there was no further information available to me when I was trying to figure out what was being asked for. A special town meeting to amend the entire table?
Well, so what happened was Derek Dougset, who owns the Wink Farm, who's purchased Wink Farm and is developing lots up there, had come to the planning board looking to do some things that just didn't quite follow the land use language that was inside the ordinance. So what we've done is looked at some of the things, he's made a list for us for some of the things that he wants to do there in Wink Farm moving forward. And he's requesting that we have a special town meeting to make some of these adjustments so he can move forward with the development of his property. And we discussed it with the selectmen. You guys thought that was a good idea. He came in, he spoke to you. He was at a couple of times. He and his partner David Carré came in and gave a list to the planning board last month of the uses that they were exactly wanting to do moving forward. We said, you know, well, right now he really wants to do like a brew pub with a restaurant type of thing, similar to like bath brewing downtown, I think. So we said, well, you've got nine lots in there. Go think about exactly all those different types of things you want to do and then we'll compare it to the ordinance to make sure that those land uses are allowed inside the urban development park. And if they're not, how we can adjust them and do some modifications. We can do this all in one, one fell swoop. So I have a list here of what you brought for us. I'm sorry, I don't have it. For you, I kind of marked mine up.
Why, why don't we have that? Why was that not presented to us as part of the packet that we got?
Well, because I did it last night. I can share it with you now if you'd like.
I, I have, I have expressed my dismay any number of times in the last year about getting information at the last minute that starts, that requires a big deal of discussion. And again, getting the marked up piece as we sit down to meet just frustrates the jeepers out of you.
Well, we were trying to do it expeditiously because Derek was looking at a timeline with a developer wanting to move forward with this. So it was just discussed in our last meeting and then we had the holidays and so I just got this completed.
Madeline, you do understand she did this last night on her time, right?
At like 9 o'clock.
And I did this on my time too. So.
Right, but you, you just expressed your concerns about, about timely information and she just did this last night.
And when we were here for the selectmen, you all were very desired that we got this going and rolling quickly.
We talked about one particular item having to do with the brew pub, not a wholesale discussion of, of other things.
Well, we talked, we actually did talk about having him come through with a collective approach so that his total, all of his visual requests on how he'd like to bring the land forward was presented in one town meeting versus having him do one and one and one. It made sense to bring it all forward at one time. We did talk about that.
And so that's what we're doing.
So why a special? Why can't you do what everybody else does? We can, tell me.
Well, a why a special meeting? He has some time constraints with developers that are looking at property now. With construction, there's all these lead times. It takes a long time even to get a building ordered. Then you've got to wait 10 months for it to show up, that sort of thing. So he's just trying to roll it in faster than waiting until June to have this changed, June or July, whenever the meeting is. And the selectmen were on board with having a special town meeting and moving it forward early to try to help out a business in town and develop our commercial base.
Are the things in there that our current audience wouldn't cover?
Yeah, I mean, I can get to that. So some of it wasn't in here and some of it wasn't there. So there were five, four different things that he was requesting.
Was that the red zone?
Yeah, so based on, what I gave you was the entire land use listing. So you have the whole thing in context. If you go to page seven. So I think we changed like four, maybe five of them. And I can go over why. So page seven.
It's fairly obvious why. Because those are the things that, that need to be changed to make the, to make the land formerly known as the Wink Farm useful for more.
Well, it provided, Wink Farm actually provided some elements to certain, so it provided the opportunity for a hotel and eating.
Right.
Which, which should in theory carry over to a restaurant and brew pub. But, but because it doesn't, there's, there's this kind of fluctuating engagement.
Right.
And we're trying to make it, because there's pieces here that do accommodate it in one way, but not in another way.
I am not objecting to the change in the uses. I'm objecting to having the changes presented to me before the meeting starts, minutes.
Well, I suppose you could vote to wait another month, but I'm not so sure that that would be fair for Mr. Dougset.
I'm okay with the timeline. I think we should at least hear what you'd like to say. Keep going?
Yep. Okay, so on his list, he had breweries and distilleries with tasting rooms and restaurants, including bars, pubs, food trucks and food service standalone restaurants. So this is actually covered really well. Page seven, number eight. It used to be indoor places for eating and drinking, no dancing, live entertainment permitted. So it's, it's, the problem with this one as it was read or as it's written is that that's not allowed in the UDP zone. If you look over to the right under UDP, there's no P, which means it's not permitted in the UDP zone. And so the Wink Farm is only a part of the UDP zone. There is other lots besides the Wink Farm in there. So when I'm talking UDP, it's Wink Farm and some other, some other lots up there. So that was the problem with this one. And it also says no dancing or live entertainment permitted. And he didn't want entertainment, you know, have a three-piece band or something in the brew pub for Friday night or whatever. So what we actually decided to do, the board, we all talked it over. We added a 12, you see down below. So it's exactly like number eight. Well, first we added outdoor to number eight because with COVID, people have been eating inside and outside. And with it just saying indoor, it kind of excluded and made some of the places and how they've had to adjust how they work kind of non-performing now. So we actually added and outdoor and we took solely, because solely seemed strange. So we changed eight. We added 12, which is exactly eight, except for it does allow dancing and live entertainment. The thought was that allowing that in the urban development park and not in the business commercial made sense because they're over there, they're not right up against homes, residences where music would be loud. It's not his intention to have like a, like a huge venue or an outdoor, somebody said Woodstock or something. I think it was one of the comments. But that was not his intent. It's just, you know, you go down to Savasco and they've got three or four people playing on the outside deck, you know, on a Friday night, something like that. So that was our fix for that one. And so number 12 is only allowed in the UDP.
Can you tell me why just revising eight isn't sufficient?
Because it says no dancing or live entertainment.
You just take that out.
And he wants dancing and live entertainment.
But that would impact the commercial, so. Because this is only, they only added it for UDP. The P could go down to the red. It's only in the UDP, which is not a butting residential.
Right, we have a lot of residents in our business and commercial zone, so having live music
Only in P, only in the UDP.
Like it would be intrusive in the business and commercial if there was a resident right next door.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
So that one takes care of that one. The second one was indoor and outdoor sports, playground, batting cages, mini golf, driving range, skating, soccer, bocce ball, yoga spin classes, cornhole and similar activities. So that one is actually taken care of by, if you go to page eight. There is an indoor and outdoor sports facilities conducted for profit.
Can I just ask you to say those, I'm sorry, say those things again?
Yeah.
Slowly, batting cages.
Yeah, yeah, because it's kind of interesting. What do you want to say about it? So it's indoor and outdoor sports, playground, batting cages, mini golf, driving range, skating, I think ice skating, soccer, bocce ball, yoga spin classes or yoga and then spin classes, cornhole and similar activities. So just outdoor sport, recreation, whatever. So the number seven on page eight is outdoor sports facilities conducted for profit. So we added the indoor, because it might be indoor and outdoor. It just seemed weird to be only outdoor and excluding indoors. So that was one that was already there. And that is in the UDP, so it didn't have to be added. He had another one, farmer and flea markets. We kind of debated on farmer and flea markets and they're kind of the same thing. And then there is one in here for agricultural, it was agricultural market, I think, which covers a farmer's market. But anyway, so we took care of that one with, let's see, number eight. We added number eight, indoor and outdoor flea markets. And we put that just in the UDP. And we can add these later. We can take and add them to the business commercial later, that sort of thing, but we not having an incredibly amount, incredible amount of time to really delve into it and maybe add some stipulations inside of the ordinance to cover certain things. We wanted to just really keep it simple and non-intrusive to the community. So we added number eight to cover that. Under G, number three, there was bottling of beverages. Now, in our attempt to try to figure out how a brewery fit into these land use ordinances, we came across bottling of beverages. There was some debate amongst the board on that doesn't include manufacturing them. It just means you bottle them. Like you drive them in a truck, you drive the coke in on a truck and you put it in bottles and you send it out. So we decided to add bottling, manufacturing and to the bottom of beverages. To try to clear that one out. And I think that is it. And I don't think there are questions. David?
I just like to note that the Wink Farm, the primitive Wink Farm years ago was to have commercial industrial park away from the rest of the Route One area. And this does seem to fit that quite nicely. And after the town wanted a Wink Farm development commercial process.
Well, everything I hear in here seems to be the latest things that are happening across the state. I don't know how many youth are involved in ice hockey and ice skating. I feel like everybody and their family are going out of state to make that happen. I would like to see people stay in the state of Maine and the town of Westbach to do those activities.
Absolutely.
Every Saturday, I take my dad to all the flea markets and indoor and outdoor flea markets we can find in the state of Maine, going all the way to the Canadian border. It would be nice to have something like that.
Absolutely.
In this town. I think we, for the first time, have the opportunity to have a community. I would like to see that happen.
I agree. I think these are great additions. I think some of this is actually in here already. I think it's, you know, and when we look at having certain elements included, like a hotel and eating, I, to me, it's not a far stretch to add in these elements as an interpretation of what's already there, but more clarification. So I, I, I'm very much in favor of expanding the utilization of the farm.
Charlie, how much, how much lead time do we need to call a special town meeting?
Off the top of my head, I should know that. I believe it's about 14 days for an open town meeting.
Indeed.
If you were having it by secret ballot, as our referendums have, that's a little bit longer. That's a two-month process. So.
So it's going to be open vote, 14-day.
Anything is permitted still, with COVID.
Yeah.
You, you have the option of calling an open town meeting or a secret ballot town meeting.
But does a secret ballot have to do two months? Do we have a secret ballot?
Oh, yeah, there's a statutory timeline.
So it's really the timeline that I think we're looking at.
Right. An open town meeting is fairly straightforward and easy to put together.
The question would really be the venue for that.
Right.
If we think there's going to be a larger turnout, you want to make sure you have the room so that people feel comfortable. You don't want people to, in my opinion, you don't want people to be uncomfortable coming to a town meeting because there might be 50 people in the fire department.
And that's really going to be hard to find because the schools aren't going to let you in.
Well, we can pull trucks out.
Yeah.
And just do it in the, in the maze.
Yep.
Plenty of room in there.
Which Pittsburgh and other towns do do that.
How many do you think we could fit in there with social distance setting here?
Like the six feet?
I think it's only three now.
How much larger is it for this? It's only three feet, isn't it?
It's, it's much better. We have probably three of these anyway.
We can make it work. I wouldn't concern yourself too much with the venue. We'll figure that out.
I, I think, I, I think we should expedite this as quick as possible so that they can move forward what they're trying to achieve in a timeline that they're trying to achieve it in.
I move that we set a special town meeting at the nearest appropriate time in the nearest appropriate place to see if what the town desires to do about these changes in the land use ordinances.
Can I just follow that?
And that be, that be an open town meeting in order to expedite the process for the changes.
We just need a second first.
We do. I second it.
Yep. The board was also curious if we could push forward some of the ordinances that did not go through last year that were ready to go, that had been vetted by Sally.
I think we need to take these one at a time.
Absolutely.
If you can finish this motion.
Okay.
Okay.
My only question about this motion is, is have you, are you going to talk with Sally about it first, darling?
Yeah, I was waiting to get the okay from you guys before I was going to send these off to Sally to look at. And we were hoping that each of these changes would be like a separate vote. So there's someone like two of them, but not the other two. They could say no to two and yes to two kind of thing.
That makes sense too.
We're going to separate them out.
Okay. So as soon as we get a response from Sally, we can set a date.
Okay.
So do we want to vote on that now? I think we all did except for Madeline, but I think she made the motion, so.
Okay.
So yes, once those are reviewed, then we can compile a warrant for the select board to sign. And if that's ahead of the next selectmen's meeting, we could always hold a special selectmen's meeting to get it going.
Now, now can we add in her comment to this?
Oh, that's a separate issue. So, yeah, go ahead with that.
Go ahead and talk about, we had to finish this one, now we can talk about.
So the, the board was hoping that we could also, at that special town meeting, push forward the ordinance changes that did not go to the meeting last year. They were.
A couple got flipped forward.
Three of them.
And how does that fit with the, with the goal for the comprehensive plan?
Some of them were, we were actually voted on and they were flip-flopped in the warrant, so we had to pull them out.
None, none of them are conflicting with the comprehensive plan. Some of them were making consistencies within the book, which is totally aligned with the comprehensive plan and making it clear to read and understand. So I don't think it does.
Okay.
Actually, they get expanded in the timeline with the group meetings.
I want to do this all as one.
I do too.
Well, these are ones that were supposed to have been done, that fell off.
I understand that, but I'm, I'm just not comfortable with it. I wanted to do what's all, all is going to be done with it, not done with it.
I was just saying, all the changes are never going to be done with it, so.
I just think, again, we're trying to piggyback and get.
Well, one was the date to help timing of the newspaper.
Fifteen days, really.
Fifteen versus 12. These are, and one more alteration, typos essentially corrected, so they're not.
I can revisit them if you want, I can bring them to the next meeting.
I would, I would prefer to have them before the meeting, so that I can read them and understand what they are. I still would like to have them before the meeting, it's much more.
That's very clear.
You want your things 14 days in advance. I don't think it's too much to ask us to have two days to prepare.
So I will say, if you review them at the next meeting, then that won't be on, we can't produce a warrant that night based on every scenario.
Yeah, the timeline.
Well, so I'm just concerned about the time.
So I guess, let me pose.
Are we trying to do it as fast as possible, or are we okay reviewing those at the next selectmen's meeting and then setting a warrant after that?
But we're not, it will be voted on, probably has to be voted on. So if we have a special town meeting, we're trying to put them all into the town meeting.
Well, that's what Charlie was trying to say.
I'm talking about having a selectmen's meeting to approve a warrant for a town meeting. But I suppose if we review them at the next town, next selectmen's meeting, then we can hold a special selectmen's meeting after that just for the warrant. Sorry, I talked myself off.
Did you hear yourself back off the cliff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Originally, we were talking about having a warrant for a special town meeting at the next selectmen's meeting.
Right.
We'll do that at a later meeting.
Immediately following the meeting on the 20th, works.
Right.
Okay.
But will, do we need a motion to go forward with that, or no?
No, because it's going to be voted on in the next meeting. I think we're, I think we're at where we are.
I can provide those to Christine by Monday morning.
Perfect.
That would be very helpful.
Okay.
We set with business item two?
We are. I wish you the best of luck in your, in everything, you have some really cool plans.
Just to clarify this, the boards that work at the Wing Farm proposal at the 20th?
Yes.
And the boards will be taking that on a special town meeting for those change, those changes?
No, I think we approved them, we're waiting for Sally to approve them.
What, what they're going to review at the next meeting are the ordinance changes that got mixed up on last year's town meeting warrant. So, we're not going to set a date for a special town meeting until the board has had opportunity to review those changes again.
Because we have to kill back, we have to hear back from Sally.
I realize that, that's my point. You mean, I'll make, how busy is Sally right now?
She's busy. Right, I would, I would prefer that we take care of these particular changes in order to allow the plans to go forward for the Wing Farm. And that should be priority.
Sally's already approved the ordinance changes. It was, it was our, it was our mix-up, not Sally's mix-up.
No, it's time for you to review.
But it's, but it's, we're not, the, the ordinance changes aren't going to be at Sally's. I should say, the Wing Farm are the only ordinance changes that will be at Sally's, I mean, reword that.
Right.
All the other ordinance changes that we are considering have already been reviewed by Sally.
So my point is that if there is a need for lag time, we take care of the, and there's a problem with including the second set at the special town meeting. The special town meeting for that is urgent. So if we can get those done together, good, then let's take care of the Wing Farm issue.
Absolutely, I agree, that's a priority, but I think we can get both done.
So I just want to make sure that we don't delay the Wing Farm for any reason whatsoever. So if we can't get it done, that we just remember whatever ARP is at. And those other, those other things can be taken care of at the regular town meeting.
Did you say the next selectmen's meeting was the 10th? 20th.
Charlie, thank you for getting all that done late last night.
So I, I just have one question. So you go through your approval, you say, yes, we go. When is the actual town meeting, when's the first available time that that could be?
We have to wait to hear back from Sally.
So do you really talk at end of February?
It depends, we don't, we don't know. She, she now has to approve the language that we put forth, and that will then, from that point forward, it's two weeks.
At what point do we not have a special town meeting to bear the cost if we're only saving 60 days?
I don't, I mean.
It's minimal cost, the cost isn't a factor.
Okay.
And I don't think the town is going to be the cost.
And it's not 60 days.
Kathleen and Derek would be fine with that.
Yep, and he's already said.
The marketing, he's going to, yep.
It's just with construction, there's such lead times on anything.
Even ordering anything, ordering material, it's all, everything's just not.
I'd buy a jar of, I don't.
And I think it's a great addition to West Bath, I really do.
Anything commercial.
Something else to consider, we need a moderator for the town meeting. So everyone can kind of think about who would be good to stand up in front of the crowd and moderate this vote, because the clerk cannot do it happily, take on that task. So think about that, because we will need a moderator, okay? Everyone think about that, we need a moderator.
Need a moderator.
I nominate David, but we'll talk about it.
I think we should move on to item three.
If it's a quiet crowd, I'd do it.
Okay, town, here's your straightest remark.
I don't have anything to report on, having off of the holidays. I'll have more for you next time.
Okay, future agenda items, anything that we need to put on during the next meeting?
I'd like to see any item of value put forward. So this has been transferring of the land, in my mind.
I think we have a warrant article for that, I'll look it up, see what it says.
I'd like to just, anything that, that we offer should be offered to the town.
Anything else from the?
Kina Gallery?
Couple of clients?
Right. Second, third, peace out.